...in the regular session of the Asbury Park City Council meeting of May 27. As to comply with the Open Publics Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster Star Ledger on January 2nd, 2015, and posted on Volton Board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. Right now, we will, I will entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. The public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner. Any derogatory, abusive, or threatening statements will not be permitted. The Chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order and after appropriate warning may terminate any further comments from the Speaker. I will ask that any Speakers please state your names, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record, and you have a three-minute time limit.
Lori Ross, R-O-S-S, and Sam, speaking on behalf of the West Side Community Center at 115 DeWitt Avenue in Asbury Park. Looking forward to first meeting with the Mayor and the Councilmember with regards to partnering and collaboration with the West Side Community Center. I want to just note for the record that I did attend the Capers for 2014 last Tuesday, and I will say this, I was very impressed that there were no police officers in attendance, although I was very disappointed in the fact that very few questions, if any, were answered with regards to how the city spent its 2014 Community Development Block Grant Fund. In particular, I do not think that the Council knows this, but the city gave a for-profit business Community Development Block Grant Funds. And it was certainly inappropriate, it's in the Carroll Square, it's owned by a single person, and it's certainly not in a targeted area. It doesn't meet the definitions for the funding, it was for an air conditioner. Now, I will tell you that the West Side Community Center is in the heart of the targeted area. I will tell you that the gym has air conditioning, however, our main building doesn't. That's a nice-to-have luxury item, it's not necessarily a requirement. We serve very low to moderate income individuals. Again, that expenditure of HUD money was inappropriate and will probably be subject to being paid back. Again, your Community Development Director was not there, we were given some contrary information than what Mr. Nuttrow was given, little disappointed not to see him there. It's clear and convincing to me that there is very little, if no oversight. Also regarding the prior year's funding, you can't blame a committee or a Councilmember that may be on a committee for whether or not HUD guidelines are followed, are here to. You have to have professional staff that are not only capable, but willing to do the job. HUD doesn't want to see the city lose money. They will work with the appropriate professional to do so. But I want to know what the city manager and the Council are going to do about this inappropriate use of HUD funds to a for-profit business in the central business district. So, it's for an air conditioner.
Have you done your thing?
Oh, yeah, no, I'm done. Thank you.
I looked into it, I heard about this, and I looked into it, all right? And I do have information I'd be willing to share with you, all right, after the meeting regarding this, all right, about the condition that led to, all right...
Doesn't fit.
All right.
I've got the regs.
All right. Yeah, I have it here too, I'd be more than happy to talk to you after the meeting about that.
I do have the regs, but it's not as important for me to know, it's important for the public and, most importantly, the city council. It's not about the West Side Community Center, it's not about the board, it's not about, it's about the community knowing how these federal funds are spent so that you won't be faced with paying 151-plus from 2011, or the other money that you have that you're not spending on a timely basis. It's about the public having a right to know. And I am shocked and pretty disgusted that your Community Development Director didn't even bother to show up. But again, glad no police officers were there.
Thank you, Lori. And Tony will talk to you after the meeting. Thank you.
Hi, Rita Moreno. At last night's meeting, I missed the first part of it, and it was about comp time, could you explain that to us? That's one of the questions. The other question is, I don't think we have all these, is this salary ordinance for every city employee in this packet? I mean, I don't think we're in New York City here, there's four pages of employees. And that's my second question. And my third question is, in the, I didn't think of it last night, but when you're doing the code on the, in the code book that you're doing, is that going to be introduced tonight? I couldn't read all this in a short time. But in the code book, I was wondering what employees are in it, if any, and is the Council in it, in the code book? About how many Councilmembers, how long they serve, and all that? Those are my questions. Comp time.
Can I do the code first, just because that's me, and that'll take me 10 seconds to answer? The Council's in it, the terms, the way the election goes, and specifically the change of the form of government's in it? If I miss anything, correct me. So, it isn't, it isn't, Fred Raffetto's job isn't in the code, the Director of Social Services is in the code. So, when you say are, there are jobs and job descriptions in the code that we have spent some time tweaking, we have broken up jobs into two, we've eliminated jobs, we've added jobs, but there are not specific people, there are director, typist, you know, it's hard, I mean, is that, does that answer your question, Rita?
I guess.
Okay.
The other thing I wanted to say is...
Whoa, 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 wait, you're done. Code, code.
Go ahead. Comp time.
As far as the comp time, what was announced last night was that I've asked each one of the department heads to assure, all right, that they begin to look at their departments, all right, and they begin to reduce the comp time hours in their department, bringing each one of their employees into compliance with their, all right, perspective collective bargaining agreement. All right, that's what was announced last night.
What, are you going to get it down to zero?
We're going to reduce it down to, all right, whatever is appropriate for the terms of, all right, each of the collective bargaining agreements.
Well, no, but what about the federal law that you quoted the other day? It says 240 for salary...
No, 240, what they're talking about is that, all right, upon separation, all right, an employee would be eligible, all right, depending on the department and the nature of work that they're doing, would be eligible for 240 hours, all right, of payment for their comp time.
Right. Well, are you going to limit, I mean, like, limit it to like other places do, 90 days, either use it or lose it?
We're bringing it down to the terms of the collective bargaining agreements, Rita. All right, we have various, all right, agreements, all right, that we have to abide by.
Mm-hmm.
All right, as far as your question about the salary ordinances, all right, what's in your, what you have there?
Yeah.
All right, three, all right, well, two different collective bargaining units, all right, and one is the non-union employees. The reason why the lists are so cumbersome is that that is all of the, all right, possible positions, all right, that we have, all right, with possibly could have within the city. All right, there isn't an employee in each one of those positions. Those are the list of possible employees that, or positions, that are on our salary ordinance.
Okay. Are you going to eliminate some of them?
The positions aren't filled, it's easier, and it's cheaper and beneficial for the taxpayers to list them all at once. It's down the road, three months from now, we hire whatever, and whatever isn't listed, we have to do a whole new resolution. So, right now, from A to Z is listed, but that doesn't mean A to Z is filled.
Okay. Is there a resolution for the comp time?
I'm sorry?
Is there a resolution or an ordinance on comp time?
There isn't a particular resolution, are you talking about on the agenda for this evening?
No, I'm just saying, in general, comp time, is it a resolution or an...
Resolutions are prepared, all right, for comp time, all right, once there's a separation of employees, all right, they'd possibly be entitled to, all right, to pay out of comp time.
Okay, but it's neither a resolution nor an ordinance.
No, comp time is...
Comp time is something somebody made up, right?
It's in each individual contract.
Okay, well, I hope it's going to get down to zero, I'll keep in touch.
I can just elaborate on one thing that Deputy Mayor said. The city attorney position itself is listed in the city code.
I meant Fred Raffetto's not in the code. I mean, specific people aren't in the code.
We have a city attorney. Essentially, the code...
The title's in the code, yes.
...includes all of the statutory employees that the city requires to have, like the tax assessor, tax collector, the CFO, and department heads, but every single possible hire for the city of Asbury Park is in reference specifically in the city code. We follow service and the requirements of the MOU with regard to anyone that's brought on board, but the code is limited to basically the statutory employees and the department heads.
Thank you.
Excuse me, before we go on, I want to ask the Mayor or the city manager, are we allowed to take pictures in here?
Yes.
We are, okay.
Hi, Robert Francis, Tom Driver. I just had a quick question and a comment. One, I think you guys are doing a great job, that's just my opinion, especially about the street performers and the new ordinance tonight. My question is, how does the three-hour ordinance rule takes place? So, for example, let's say I'm in a spot for two hours, an official comes up to me and says, "You have to move." And I'm allowed to stay there for one more hour, and then I have to move? I was just wondering if you can go in a little bit more detail with that.
Well, we've never done it before, so how we envision it is that, A, I'm going to use, I'm going to use the musicians a little less than you, and I'll give you an example as to why.
Okay.
So, hypothetically, you're there playing the drums, or playing the drums, three hours have passed, and the owner of one of the businesses says to a special officer that go back and forth all season long, Madison Marquette pays them, says, "Listen, he's been here for three hours, and can you ask him to move 100 feet? I have a band coming out, or I'm going to be playing music, or I'm going to be doing something like that." So, the public shouldn't be coming up to you, I mean, this is obviously our first year, this is a work we'll tweak it next year. It should be informing a special officer, who then informs you that your three hours are up, or that, you know, your two hours, you have another hour, and then we request you move 100 feet.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought. I thought that, you know, like, same thing if you're there for an hour, and then they come after you after that hour, you still have two hours to stay in that spot, and then you can...
You don't have, you're not required to move until your three hours are up, and if you're requested. So, if, if you are never asked to move, you can stay there 10 hours. If you're asked to move, you have to move 100 feet after three hours.
Okay, all right, thank you, I appreciate it, everybody, thanks.
Fred, am I, I'm correct in everything I said, right?
Yeah, thank you.
Robert Weiner, 601 Madison Avenue. I just want to give a little update on the JET program, which was very successful this year, and thanking the AP-TV and the Asbury Park Sun and Channel 13 for giving us great coverage. It was a junior entrepreneurial training program involving 17 Asbury Park students from each of the schools, and it was so successful that Mr. Arnone of the Freeholders invited all the kids down tomorrow to be on it in front of all the Freeholders, and Councilmember Clayton will be representing the city council there. And the program is going to be extended next year to 35 students. We've already met with three out of the four schools, and it's just another effort that we're making here to just make a difference in Asbury Park. So, thanks, everybody, for their cooperation. Thank you.
Edward Myers, 206 First Avenue, Asbury Park. As you probably know, I'm with the Arch Celebration Fund, this is the first chance I've gotten to read this thing, and I think a few things are missing.
There's nothing in here about veterans, disabled, or seniors, there's nothing about a grace period, and they also suggested that the free culture zone be reinstated and used, you're trying to take people up there, but putting food trucks up there, why not let the performers who don't have a license play at that end, or people with amps, as a way of drawing traffic up there? And also, will this three-hour thing apply to me, who sits there with a drawing board?
You have three minutes, so when you say your three minutes are up, so if you want to keep on asking questions...
No, that's it, I'm...
You're done?
I've asked.
Once we start answering, there's no cross-conversations.
Say that again?
Once we start answering your questions, your time has expired, so there's no more cross-questions. So, if you want to, you want sure you don't want to embellish any of your questions, or...
Well, I want answers to those questions.
You just want to answer those questions, fine, thank you.
Fred, do you want to take it?
Well, the prior Council had adopted a resolution a number of years ago establishing a free culture zone, what was termed a free culture zone at that time. And my recollection was, it was the southern area of the boardwalk from the casino going south to the Ocean Grove border, and there were less restrictions with regard to that area in an attempt to cultivate performers to that particular area of the boardwalk, because there would not be any concerns about interfering with adjacent businesses. You know, you, for example, had utilized the example of the drummer, for instance, who might, the music might conflict with a band that one of the cafes along the boardwalk had, something like that. But that's something that this Council could consider, and we could certainly make a copy of the resolution that the prior Council had adopted available to all of you to consider for the future. Again, it was a specified area of the boardwalk, south of the casino. And, you know, the other issues, they were not part of the prior ordinance, we could certainly look into whether any additions should be worked in, but the provisions that the Council is considering at this point are very limited. It really is just a change to the fee and the period of time, and with regard to the question about whether someone who is an artist, for instance, is going to be subject to the three-hour period, obviously their work is different than someone who emits noise, so I don't know that you're necessarily going to have a law enforcement officer who's going to request someone to, a permit for that type of performing to move, but if, in fact, the artist is operating under the terms of a street performer's permit, then they are subject to all of the requirements of this ordinance, and that does require after three hours. If you are requested by a law enforcement officer to relocate, and again, only 100 feet, then they would have to relocate 100 feet away.
Did that answer your question?
Uh, no, but go on. It doesn't, it doesn't apply, I'm not the drummer. Nobody's offended by my stuff, you know, so...
Okay, well, then you should have no problems.
That's why I'm here, I'm trying to figure it out, man.
Thank you.
All right, is that it?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Hi, Mayor, Council, Staff, Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue, that's B-A-U-M-G-A-R-T-N-E-R. I've been watching the infrastructure work with great interest over on Fifth Avenue, Berg, Kingsley, Webb Street, down a block from where I live, and I'm a bit concerned about a few things that I'm noticing. The streets have been seriously regraded to redirect stormwater into Sunset Lake. A trash separator has been placed on the edge of the lake at Fifth Avenue, and it collects now, it appears to be, the majority of the stormwater runoff from that area, which used to really run away from the lake. Now, the trash separator is great, but I'm very concerned about the increased inflow into the lake during storms, because there's no place for that water to go except all the way down to the west end, to the small outfall pipe that connects to Deer Lake. So, my first question is, was the water volumes accounted for to leave the lake? It's great putting water into the lake, but it's got to get out of there somehow, otherwise it's going to be overflowing. The second thing I noticed is that bumpouts have been built at the corners of Fifth and Kingsley, and Fourth and Kingsley. These are also referred to as curb extensions. It was my understanding that any more curb extensions were going to be denied or prohibited after the experiment at the southern end of Kingsley. Now, this brings to my mind a question of process. In some casual conversations with people, I was told that the explanation is, well, the planning board said it was okay, so we did it. I'm going to act as a public advocate right now, in that there is a redevelopment plan. Great lengths were taken with public input and due course to adopt a redevelopment plan. In that plan are specific street layouts, and what was built there violates what is actually in the redevelopment plan. And it's my belief that you cannot just supersede the redevelopment plan because, oh, the planning board, you know, approved our project, and it happened to be on our site plan that way. So, I think there needs to be some serious discussion amongst various entities, Council, you act as redevelopment authority, perhaps your legal counsel need to really put a framework together as to how does one build down there? Do you build according to the plan, which I think would be the legal thing to do? Or do you just ad-hoc, start changing things around, because, oh, the planning board said it was okay, or gee, we think it looks nicer that way, which is against public policy and all, and it kind of insults all of the work that was put into the plan by the public 10 years ago. So, those are my two concerns, water infiltration and the process of how things are proved down there. Thank you. Any comments?
Yes, excellent points. I can't talk to you about the water infiltration, you and I have talked about the bumpouts and about the planning board and everything, we've had this discussion. You sent the entire Council a very thick package today, which I started reading, and you're right, and you want to know something, none of us were up here in 2002 when this was done, and we were relying on our professionals, and our professionals kind of let this one slip through the cracks, and I'm just as ticked off as you are when you explained to me, like, and you explained it very well, like, this was okay by the state, this was okay by CAFRA, this was okay by public hearings, where they had hearings, be it the Berkeley, be it the Paramount. So, this was a plan that was vetted many times by many people, yet it was changed, and we were misled to believe we couldn't do anything about it. So, I appreciate your input, and...
Thank you.
It will not happen again, because you woke up, you woke us up, and nobody told us.
I think you woke yourselves up, thank you.
Sometimes, you know, people think just because we sit up here, we're told everything. We're not told everything, so we learn by people like you, we learn from all the volunteers, and we learn, and it's, it's great to learn, and that's why, you know, you've been to my house, other people have been to my house, I have a listed phone number. I do not know all the answers, but I'm, I'm a sponge, I'll soak everything in. So, Warner, I appreciate your input, and if anybody knows this problem or this process more than you, I'd like to meet them, except the ones who are pulling the wool over our eyes. So, again, I appreciate your input, and we will be on top of it from here on out.
Any way I can help, I'm more than happy. I was back in those days, I was part of creating the plan, and sat in a lot of meetings, and had a lot of knowledge about it, so I'm grateful to be taken seriously about this. But you need to amend the plan, if you want to make changes, you simply need to amend the plan, and I think that's something that's been in the works for a while, too, that's kind of in limbo.
Yes, and we're in the process of doing that, but it would have been nice for somebody on our staff, I'm not talking about Fred, I'm not talking about Tony, I'm talking about our professionals, to say, you know, "They can't do that, but they did it." So, we didn't get that advice, so we got the advice from you now, so we're going to be on top of it.
Okay.
Again, thank you.
Right, you're welcome.
And just to your point, Warner, the, I mean, we lost the city planner, which has been a delay, as one of the reasons the city planner is such an important position is because that potentially delays any redevelopment down, redevelopment down, and this amendment process. So, that process has been delayed by the unfortunate departure of Don Salmon.
Yeah, okay, hope we can get an answer on Sunset Lake next time, thanks.
Yeah, Tony, can you ask TNM? The thing, since TNM came on board, which I'm going to say March, we, TNM has a full-time inspector down there overseeing this project, that his salary is being picked up by the developer, but I think they're blowing some calls also, so we'll get on top of them and make sure that we're getting all the facts back. And I believe there's weekly meetings, and if it means I have to go and I'll take Warner with me as my consultant, I'll go to the weekly meetings to make sure we're getting told the truth. Again, thank you.
Mark Clark, 1259 Washington Avenue. I've been running the basketball league for Asbury Park Rec for the last 10 years in Asbury, well, seven years Asbury Rec ran the league, first three years was on my own. And the budget for the youth league and adult league has always been between 15,000 and 17,000. For the last seven consecutive years, Asbury Park Rec gave me no problem, they always funded the budget, budget, but this year, they funded the budget for the kids, which I'm appreciative of that. But I'm trying to get funding for the core group of kids between 15 and 20. You know, we play 80 games for the kids and 80 games for the older kids. Well, I get it, the older kids can probably pay for their own uniforms and things like that, but the money to take care of the referees, the people who do the score, the people who do the clock, you know, and things like that, so we hit a wall this year, and the difference is $5,000 to $7,000, and I was just trying to figure out where can we get that funding to continue the league that I've been doing for the last 10 years. That's it.
Tony, would you...
I don't even need an answer, y'all can just figure out, and then I can come back and see Mr. Keldu or the record or whatever, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I would suggest you attend the next Recreation Committee meeting and...
We had a meeting, we had a meeting, that's where we got permission to do the funding for the youth, but we need funding for the core group of guys between 15 and 20 that, frankly, they should be, you know, they have something to do, year-round, when they get out of school or whatever, you know how it goes.
Yeah, so, I think that it's on the Recreation Committee meeting, which will be next week, and the process that we will go through is vetted through the committee, which would then make a recommendation to the Council.
Thank you very much.
And you're welcome to come to that meeting.
All right.
Which is Monday...
Monday or Tuesday? I don't know, you think it's necessary?
Monday at 4:30.
Oh, Mark?
Let me double check, let me just double check to be sure.
I understand that, I know that.
June 1st, 4:00 PM, Monday.
We just talked.
Then why is he in?
Because he was asked by Senator...
Hi, I'm Gail Hellfrik from Seventh Avenue. I just want to thank all of you up there tonight for taking the time and putting in the effort of all the activities that you were working on. It's refreshing to hear that information, it's not something I think that everybody knows, and I think, I don't think it's, you know, people just don't understand how much it takes, I think, to actually right the ship here in Asbury Park. So, thank you for taking the time and giving us that update. I did want to reiterate, I had mentioned at a former meeting, and I've spoken to Amy about it a little bit, but I do think that, still think that you can't do it alone, and that to the extent that we can pull volunteers from the city, I'm here to say I'd like to help you with that effort, and if there were, as you give updates each meeting, if you can identify volunteers or people with certain expertise that you need, even if it's just for an hour or two, I think we should try to do it, because I think there's still a lot more to be done, and, but I did want to thank you for taking the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maureen Nevin, Deer Lake Court. Hi, I just want to thank everybody for the cooperation, and it's great to be able to call up the Councilmembers and toss out ideas, and they're actually glad to hear from you, it's really nice. My question is about the lot at Webb and Deer Lake Drive, it's a sizable parking lot. It hasn't been used since I've moved here, since 99. I have no idea, you know, what it's zoned for, but right now it has a bunch of containers up there, you know, like tractor trailers without the cabs on them, and I just wondered if the zoning allows that, it's a residential neighborhood, and I'd like to know who owns that property? Is that Sackman, is that part of that building on the corner of Kingsley and Deer Lake Drive?
I Star.
Oh, I Star owns it, so those are I Star's trailers now?
Correct, and I guess, Tony, you can have Barbara look and see if those trailers could be legally parked there.
So, you're going to look into whether that meets the zoning and stuff? I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Maggie Quentin from Ocean Avenue, and I just wanted to ask two questions. One is if the library committee is still in place, and if... One is if the library committee is still in place, and if there's anything going on with that. I did go to, tried to go to a meeting, and there was no meeting, and I would like to see the library here be better, since I came from Mercer County, which has like fantastic libraries, and I would love to see something like that here. And the other thing is about the planning board, and I just heard before from Werner, I think it is, say things, and I did go to the planning board meeting, and I couldn't understand what their position was, and this was for the food trucks, and there was no question, they took this as restaurant, this is a restaurant. And there was no thing about bathrooms, there was no questions about, it was all done, and the only question they had was about signage. And to me, I was very, like, surprised. I thought they would go into more in-depth of what's needed if this was a restaurant. If you're bringing in 100 cars in the parking lot, 100 families using this, I would think there's ordinances of how much you should give this, if there has to be handicap bathrooms or anything like that. And to me, there was nothing about that. It was just stamped, and the only thing was about, the big discussion was on signage. So to me, I don't know what they're supposed to do, I was just surprised about it, so that's my questions.
The meeting that you attended, that was the third or fourth meeting that we had to address the food trucks, and we had addressed the bathrooms prior to that. There will be bathrooms on-site. Signage was an add-on, but there will be bathrooms on-site so that...
But the bathrooms on-site were the bathrooms that are there already. It was just that one truck. That's all, that was there, and that was, there was no thought for anything more than that, which to me, these are six restaurants almost, and it's also now 100-plus families possibly parking there and using this, and to me, not to think that you'd have to have something more than that, but there was no talk about it. Even if you decided that it was fine, there was no discussion, so that's all.
As I said, there had been previous discussion, and part of the thought was because the location is so close to Convention Hall, those bathrooms in Convention Hall would be the backup.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And it's on a trial basis, so nobody knows what to expect.
Right.
But they know for them to go forward and succeed, if we see, if there's 100 families down there, and you're right, the beach bathroom is not handling the flow, we say, hey, you gotta do something better, I assure you, they're gonna do it, or else they're not gonna be in business next year.
Right.
So we kind of have, like, you know, a hammer over them.
Yes, I just thought they would have talked about it more.
Well, we did, we did in-depth the council meetings also, where it was first, we vetted it first at where they were originally gonna go, and we said, they didn't want to have electricity, they didn't want to have running water and everything.
Right, yeah, I know, yep.
And we said that, and then when they went further north, all that was in there, so it was vetted here, and then it went to the planning board, like Yvonne said several times, and by the meeting you went to, it was just the final signage.
Right, it was like a stamp, yeah.
Right, and as far as the library board, we heard the same complaints that sometimes meetings were being canceled because of the lack of quorum. At the last meeting, through the codification, we found out that there used to be seven members on the planning board, the city could have nine members on the, on the library board. The city could have nine, so we reported two new members, so there should be no reason for monthly meetings that occur now because of a lack of a quorum. And hopefully you'll attend those, because there's a lot of people in Asbury Park that they see the potential of the library, they just want to see it take off and, you know, get up to speed, so that would be, love for you to attend that.
And Don is the, the library board?
There's Don, no, there's Don.
So you should, you could...
We've always had a court, we've never not had meetings with a lack of quorum.
Oh, really?
Where, did you have your last meeting?
We might cancel meetings because of events or something where the library staff has got things going, but to my knowledge, we never cancel meetings with a lack of quorum.
Well, let me ask you this, do you have monthly meetings?
We do.
And out of 12 months in a year, how many of them actually meet? 12?
Um, no, because sometimes they go away on seminars and things like that, so sometimes we'll hop into the next week, so in other words, this meeting is Friday at 9:00.
I apologize, and thank you.
Thanks, Don.
Friday at 9:00 AM, not PM.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Hello, Councilman and Mayor Jerry Scramal Longland. Last night I brought up some issues that weren't in line with what you guys were talking about, and I'm sorry about that, but what I wanted to bring up again, I really need you to have a commitment that anytime you give a tax abatement, there's gonna be an attachment that says, we need the people, the workers, to be local residents, and people that are gonna work in the businesses live in town, because the theory is, the money circulates six times when the people live in town and work in town, and you need to help the local stores. The other thing is, I went to go see Dino's store next door, and he knows I go to the meeting, and he was talking about the drunks walking the streets at nighttime, and it's really sad when someone has to worry about their business being terrorized by people walking around. He said he's gonna answer it with cameras, but I think we need more than that. He probably, we need more foot patrol at nighttime when the people are walking or leaving the bars, and that's something that we need to address. The other thing, I brought up, we're gonna get the copper panels back in the building, they're doing an insurance claim or something like that. What we brought up last night about that. Okay, that's it, thank you.
You're done?
Yes.
The copper panels...
We're not doing it.
No, but Massa Marquette is waiting to get an official letter from the state, which they have not received yet. Carrie Turner told everybody that, and so, once they get that letter, they'll be moving forward in some direction. As far as Dino's or anybody, if anybody has a problem, and they do not pick up the phone and call the police department, they're doing them a disservice and us a disservice. July 1, it used to be, now it's August 7th because the liquor licenses are up. We cannot put restrictions on anybody's liquor license unless there's premise reports. So I mean, for somebody just to sit home and complain, oh, there's drunks walking up and down, and not call the police department so the police can log it, they don't come to me and complain because I cannot legally put, say, you have to put three cops there at night, why? Because I say you have to. No, why? Because here, Deputy Chief Salerno, I've got 58 calls to this one location, then we can do it. So for people just to sit and complain and not come to meetings, you don't even have to come to me. Pick up the phone, make a complaint, the police will follow through, and then come renewal time, and we don't have to wait till July 1st to put premise reports or put restrictions on any liquor establishment in the city, but we're not mind readers, and if people don't relay this information to us, we can't do a darn thing. So we'd like the word to get out there, if there are problems, and we do have some establishments with problems that we will probably be taking action against, but again, unless people pick up that phone and make the complaint, the police are dead in the water, and then we're dead in the water, and we cannot do a darn thing. So I wish, when you go back to Dino, you...
No, you don't go that often, I just happened to go in there today, because I was waiting for you guys to get done with the executive session, but that's okay.
Okay, well, I'll stop over there and tell them all.
Okay, and then what about the ordinance, making an ordinance or something, when you're gonna do a tax abatement, it's tied in with jobs for local residents, or your employees have to live in town, a certain percentage?
I'm just gonna say an umbrella on that. I think you all have us in the spirit of what you're saying, we talk about it all the time, Joe talks about workforce development. What we are legally allowed to put in our pilot documents is something that we are requesting from our redevelopment attorneys, Scotland. So the language you're using is not language we can put in these documents, so we're, so just, you have to just take my word that we're working on the type of language to ensure that local residents benefit from these construction or hotel or these things.
You got the gist of what I'm asking, thank you very much.
And we start at 6:30 now, so you guys come earlier, because I was, we're all in the habit of coming at 6 for the old workshops, but since January, we start the workshops at 6:30.
It's a little time to sink in, okay.
Excuse me, hello, my name is Vance Martin from Monroe Avenue. My concern is just that when the kids get out of school for the summer, they don't have, like, I'm not saying they don't have summer programs for these kids, like the boys, they have some program, but they charge $50 a week for these parents to try, you know, to bring these kids to these summer programs, the boys club. So why pay $50 per week or $70 a week to eat peanut butter and jelly sandwiches if they don't go nowhere? I'm not saying they don't go nowhere as far as, like, go to movies or go to different parks, but it's gotta be another solution for these kids in the summertime where it could be more affordable. Like, bring some free programs for these parents so they could just have the kids knowing they don't have to pay for everything. You know what I mean? You know, it's like, why these summer programs charge these parents so much money per week to eat peanut butter and jelly sandwiches? This doesn't make sense. For the summer, I mean, the summer's for the kids, right? I mean, they built the playground just, about two years ago off the avenue. Now, they got these parking meetings out here that probably bring in $3,000, $4,000 million, and that's the best they can do, this small, smaller portion of the west side is a playground, and they bring in $4,000, $5,000 just for parking. Break some of that money and bring it towards the west, more, bring more to the west, and build more to the west for these kids. That one little portion by Voddy Guard, by the Steven Maddens, and that's it? What else? What else can they build besides that? Do more, bring more, it's for the kids, right? The kids are the future, right? Let's make it happen. That's all I have to say, I don't wanna, like, you know...
Before you go, stop over there at the table and pick up one of the advertisements that have the summer programs on it.
Okay.
And you're also welcome to come to recreational meetings.
Okay.
And you know me, and I know you, and you're very easy to talk.
Of course, you know.
But you know that over the few years, a lot of programs has been going on, summer programs, and we have added more to the recreational programs, and we have more facilities...
Yeah, but they have to do, they have to do more. They raking all this money for the last five years of summer of tourists, over $4,000, $5,000 million bucks, and this is what they can do? They have to do more. I mean, even though the taxes...
I understand that.
The taxes alone is $8,000, $8,000 a year of property taxes, so you know, come on, it's like, come on, you guys run out of time, you're running out of gas, it's like, you run out of excuses. The taxes are high, they talk about high crime, that's why they raise taxes, but these parking meetings bring in $4,000, $5,000 million, they just could build a little park over here? The city gotta do better than that, come on, man.
Okay, please, please attend the meetings, but please, we do not take in $4 to $5 million a year on the park.
Well, it was, it was a rule, I don't know how much that paid for the last five years.
Our budget is a public budget, you can see, we're still on transitional aid, that means we're still a broke city where the state is still giving us $2 million a year, and our hands are tied. For us to hire somebody to sweep the streets or to rake the beaches for $10 an hour, we have to ask Trenton for permission, because we're getting $2 million in transitional aid. We got 1.95 last year, we're gonna get less this year, and that means, yeah, the taxes may go up more, they have to go up. Point blank, the taxes have to go up by Trenton until we get off of transitional aid. We're not taking in $5 million, if we were taking in $5 million, we would be off transitional aid. One day, I hope we are taking the $5 million. We're making every effort to get off transitional aid. But you talk about summer programs, I think maybe, maybe we're doing a poor job of telling people all the programs available year-round.
Yeah, but they charge for these programs.
That's, go to the recreation committee, and I believe there's also scholarships, I believe there's...
Right, so two, two things to think about. One is, we have the traditional recreation programs, and if there are families that are unable to pay those fees, have them talk to the program director and see if we can work something out. The second piece is, we are also putting together some information packet that has all the programs across the whole city for everyone in the summer, and like, a number of those are free programs. So for example, there's a free surfing program that I've been doing at the beach for the last 10 years. Every Tuesday morning, you come down, you can surf. We have a family day at the beach, we work with the West Side Community Center, the Boys and Girls Club, the rec department, that's another day. The more I dig into it, it's less about the availability of programs and more about maybe the lack of communication, so we're gonna try to do a better job this year of communicating.
Absolutely, and that's where, yeah, we're in agreement, if you can make that Monday, a meeting, please.
What time, Monday?
4:00.
4:00.
Monday at 4:00.
Right here.
City manager is conference room, second floor. Thank you.
Good evening, Bob Stevens, Third Avenue. Something that I've observed with all the development, predominantly on the east side toward the, toward the ocean, is a lot of traffic, a lot of vehicular, a lot of pedestrians, a lot of bicycles. Something else that I have observed is a lot of skateboards, and throughout the city, but it's just a popular activity for younger people, and some of these guys are older, too, but they're quite experienced at what they do, and as the sun sets, they can go at usually a pretty high rate of speed, if they choose to. I don't believe there are any ordinances for skateboarding, as there are for bicycles, which we all see them all over the city, bicycles, I mean, whether they follow the ordinances or not, they're supposed to be following vehicular traffic laws, but that's neither here nor there. The fact that the skateboards, I don't believe are under any kind of an ordinance, how they operate. However, it's very difficult, and I'm sure we've all experienced that, quite often you may have someone come out of nowhere at a high rate of speed, absolutely invisible. It could be, I've seen near pedestrian accidents because there's, by the pedestrian doesn't even see them. My main recommendation, though, would be some kind of an ordinance just created, as bicycles, they have to have a headlight, they have to have some kind of headlight for visibility, for safety, and I think that there ought to be something that should apply to skateboards as well. Right now, I think it's a free-for-all with them, they come and go in and out of streets, zip and wherever they want to go, and to me, it creates a safety issue. And then when you have this conglomeration of all different types of traffic down on the beachfront specifically, it's accidents waiting to happen. I do have a recommendation, though, and we're all familiar with this, you know, just on the head, I mean, that's gonna be something that's gonna be visible, at least for oncoming traffic or for pedestrians to see these skateboards that are traveling at, you know, precariously, high rates of speed, in and out, whatever way they want to. So it's just a recommendation, but, you know, it's one more thing, and then the other thing to look at would be enforcement, but that's, you know, just a recommendation, I think, at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, and Thursday mornings, after the council meetings, the city manager has a staff meeting with all the department heads, and I'm sure he'll bring it up with the police department tomorrow.
Move it.
Second.
All favor? On. Pose. Okay. On to the consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on the consent agenda are present, presented collectively, well, to the city council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature, there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to a particular item or item, then the item or item shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. First resolution is 2015-04, approving special events wedding applications as presented on May 26, 2015. Resolution 2015-205, resolution authorizing the tax collector to cancel 2015 quarter two taxes and refund 2015 quarter one taxes for Block 1205, Lot 11, 130 Union Avenue owned by Second Baptist Church. Resolution 2015-206, declaring an emergency so that a provision of ordinance 2015-24 concerning parking may take effect immediately. And resolution 2015-207, declaring an emergency so that provisions of the ordinance 2015-25 concerning parking...
What should be the dredging?
No, I'm sorry, 206 is the dredging and 205 is the parking can take effect immediately. Have a motion to adopt those four resolutions?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Individual resolutions, resolution 2015-208, resolution authorizing the payment of payroll in the amount at $843,636.75. Have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember... Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015 dash two oh nine, resolution authorizing payment bills in the amount of four hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirteen cents. Have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Questions or comments? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, I have to abstain on five dash oh one dash twenty-three dash two-two-oh dash zero-zero-zero dash two-oh-nine.
Okay, so noted. Resolution 2015 dash two-ten, resolution authorizing the purchase of two Kubuta RTV four-wheel-drive utility vehicle for Department of Public Works. Have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015 dash two-eleven, resolution authorizing the purchase of asphalt hot patch trailer for the Department of Public Works. Have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Any questions or comments? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015 dash two-twelve, resolution amending temporary appropriations for 2015. May I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015 thirteen, resolution awarding bid for transportation of liquid sewage sludge from Asbury Park Waste Water Treatment Facility to Passaic Valley Sewerage Commission. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Question?
Go ahead.
Can we declare, is this an emergency?
This is a resolution.
Okay, we don't have to?
Only five ordinances.
So this, we can start doing this tomorrow?
Immediately.
And start saving the forty thousand dollars we blew last year. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015 dash two-fourteen, authorizing the city of Asbury Park to implement the committed, competitive contracting process to procure vendors to operate various concessions on the beach within the city of Asbury Park. Have a motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Any questions or comments? Councilmember Clayton? Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015 dash two-fifteen, authorizing advertisement for the requested proposals for interested vendors specializing in marketing event management services to create, plan, market, and operate the 25th Asbury Park Jazz Festival to be held on June 25th and June 26th, 2016 at Sunset Park. Have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions?
Just, it's fantastic that it actually showed up. The week after, we talked about it, we got it right done, so there's no, we won't miss it for, it won't, right? Fantastic.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015 dash two-sixteen, a resolution establishing additional fees relating to special events within the city. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Have a second?
Second. Yeah, second. Questions?
Questions?
So Tony, this is the one that Joe and I are super annoyed about, because we requested, Tom, give us an analysis on what other towns were doing. We didn't get it. I spent an hour this morning calling other towns to find out that it's all over the map. Um, so, I don't, Fred, I mean, from looking the other way to charging five hundred dollars in insurance, so it literally is all over the map. So I don't know how we wanna proceed without some sort of, I don't wanna spend my time calling again, right? We can get this information?
I'll talk to Steph tomorrow.
Okay.
And I guess when we get the information, like, an analysis associated with the information, so fifty percent of towns do this, twenty-five percent of towns do this, towns that have a similar waterfront that is somewhat commercial in nature, Asbury Park, do this, just so we have a little bit of a feel, so we, and maybe it's not gonna make any, there's no rhyme or reason to it, but I just don't feel comfortable making this decision without that information.
So I'm presuming council would like to entertain a motion to table this?
Yes.
Yeah, and then we would like what we requested a month ago.
In between now and the next meeting. So we need a motion to table and a second and a motion to.
I move the table.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015 two-seventeen, establishing time duration of metered parking in municipal parking lot located on One Municipal Plaza and in the Bangs Avenue Parking Garage. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Questions or comments? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015 dash two-eighteen, extending a temporary adoption of new city code.
Move it.
Second.
And as I indicated last night, the reason we're bringing this before you is, is that the time period for the temporary code will expire at the end of the month, this month, and, um, as we're going through the ordinance process, we have a first reading, a second reading, and then there's a mandatory 30-day week period before the new code becomes effective by statute, so this extends the duration of the temporary code, so there's no lapse.
Any other questions or discussions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015 dash two-nineteen, authorizing settlement of the workers' compensation claim cash in Charlie Lomack versus city of Asbury Park. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015 dash two-two-zero, resolution of city of Asbury designating the 2015 menu items pursuant to certain agreement between the city and Madison Asbury Retail LLC. Have a motion?
Move it. Second.
I left this resolution for all of you this evening that comes out of the discussion that took place during the work session last night. Uh, we incorporated the items that, um, were presented, um, by Carrie Turner from Madison Marquette and Derek Johnson Senior. We also included an additional provision that the mayor contacted me about today, um, about remaining funds, um, that the council would have control over earmarking where that could go.
Where is that? I just didn't.
It's under the, uh.
Okay, the last being further resolved?
Last being further resolved on the second. Okay. And it's the forty thousand dollars. And I took it from, so we, we can still, um, modify that if you feel that it's a tweak.
Does it? Right, I see this down here, that makes sense.
But that last bullet point.
But the last bullet point is conflicting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll remove, uh, the last bullet point up above.
Correct.
Yes.
Am I right in that?
Right.
Yes. Take out the word that the remaining funds, that funds in the amount of not to exceed forty thousand dollars.
Right.
Okay, we'll take out the word remaining. And the being further resolved.
Okay. Okay.
With those changes?
Good.
Everything okay?
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to ordinances, first reading introduction. Ordinance 2015 dash 26, an ordinance amending section seven dash 36 entitled handicap parking of chapter seven entitled traffic of the revised general ordinances of the city of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Have a motion to introduce this, uh, ordinance 2015 dash 26?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
This ordinance, as you recall, authorizes city to remove handicap spaces that are no longer deemed necessary pursuant to direction of.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing for this ordinance is scheduled for June 24th, 2015. Ordinance 2015 dash 27, establishing a restricted parking space for the use of handicap persons at property located at 1701 Ocean Avenue designated as block 4303 lot one in the city of Asbury Park and admitting and supplementing section seven dash 36 entitled handicap parking of chapter seven traffic of the revised general ordinances of the city of Asbury Park, New Jersey. May I have a motion to, uh, introduce ordinance 2015 dash 27?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing for this ordinance is scheduled for June 24th, 2015. Ordinance 2015 dash 28, amending and supplementing chapter seven traffic of the revised general ordinances of the city of Asbury, New Jersey.
I thought we were gonna pull that.
Deputy chief has asked to pull this.
Okay. Ordinance 2015 dash 29, adopting the code of ordinances of the city of Asbury Park and the county of Monmouth, state of New Jersey. Have a motion to introduce ordinance 2015 dash 29?
So move.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for June 10th, 2015 for this ordinance. Ordinance 2015 dash 30, an ordinance amending and supplementing section four dash 20 currently entitled vending on the beachfront of chapter four, general licensing of the revised general ordinances of the city of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Have a motion to introduce 2015 dash 30?
Move it.
Second.
And this is an ordinance that I left for you this evening, and basically all we're doing on this is we're removing the expiration date. There's no other changes, it's just keeping the same ordinance that's been in effect for probably almost 10 years regarding the process for vending on the boardwalk. Um, that prior ordinance had been subject to a sunset expiration date, and had been extended by version of a number of subsequent ordinances, and we're just taking the expiration date out because the expiration date has already passed, and we want it to be effective for the summer season of 2015 because of the process that is actually beneficial to, uh, those who are seeking the opportunity to head up forward.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for June 24th, 2015.
Could I request that that be June 10th, just because it's, it's for the summer season?
Ordinance 2015 dash 31, an ordinance amending and supplementing section 30 dash 73 entitled supplemental use regulations of chapter 30 entitled land development regulations of the revised general ordinances, the city of Asbury Park, New Jersey specifically relating to arcade games. May I have a motion to open, um, to introduce this ordinance, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions?
This was addressed by council at the, the prior work session, uh, two weeks ago, um, following receipt of the planning board's comments on the proposal that had been drafted by our former director of planning and redevelopment, um, and council, uh, made some revisions to the requests that had been made by the planning board, and we worked that into the proposal this before you.
Any other comments or discussion? Councilmember Clayton?
No.
Councilmember Kendall?
No.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Motion passes by three to two. Public hearing is scheduled for June 24th, 2015. Now we're to, to second readings or public hearings of ordinances. The first one is ordinance 2015 dash 17, an ordinance amending and supplementing section four dash 15 entitled street performers of chapter four entitled general licensing of the revised general ordinances of the city of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Have a motion to open the, uh, ordinance up for a public hearing?
Move it.
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
All opposed? Is there any public comment?
Good job.
You have to get up near to the microphone, please.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My folk, 206th Avenue, Asbury Park. I just want to note, when will the new permits be available?
Fred?
That they're changing. The fee, et cetera.
Will be effective 20 days.
It's 20 days after.
After publication.
After publication.
20 days after publication. So for now, we've let it be known that no, you know, you don't have to get a permit for now, and you're not going to get into any trouble to that until 20 days after.
Okay, I just want to make one comment. Someone should inform the law enforcement officers of this.
Absolutely.
Okay, because they had no clue.
Absolutely.
Hello, Mayor and council staff. Warner Baumgartner, 5th Avenue. This is an interesting ordinance. I'm going to question whether moving 100 feet is really sufficient. Now, to give you an idea of how far that is, the pavilions are roughly 200 feet apart. So imagine moving from the end of one pavilion, you're playing in front of a restaurant, and you move halfway across the open space toward the other pavilion, and you park yourself. It's about 100 feet. Think about that.
Listen, Warner, I think you know that this has been a lengthy discussion about the street performing ordinance. This is a pilot. If it works this summer, then great. If we find that just getting the moving the 100 feet was, you know, an interesting struggle. So if this works, great. If we find that that music still interferes with either businesses or is some sort of an interference, we'll extend the 100 feet next summer.
Okay. Second question about that is, who is going to determine what 100 feet is? An officer tells somebody, hey, you got to move, go that way 100 feet. Do they have one of those little sticks with the wheel on it, and they follow the person to shoe them along 100 feet, or do they just allow the person to pace off what they think is 100 feet? I know it's an experiment. I'm just hypothetically trying to figure out like how this is going to implement itself in real life. There needs to be some measurable distance that the average person can figure out in their head without measuring it.
What we talked about was a pavilion down. So now that I know that that's 200 feet, then we'll work on that for next year.
Well, that's not true.
I assume if you're a special officer, Warner, and you tell someone to move 100 feet, I assume you have a concept of what 100 feet is.
Okay, all right.
I'm going to assume that.
Just asking. All right, great.
Again, if we get complaints, we'll tweak it next year.
Okay. Now, I noticed there are some sections in here that were bumped in the numbering, the lettering scheme, okay? And I have a question about why only July 4th is exempt?
It was in the previous ordinance.
Okay. I would like to suggest that you also consider entering Easter, which is a very large holiday down there, isn't it? Easter weekend?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. All right. Can you think of?
Can I say something?
No, no, it's my time.
Oh, okay. Don't worry, I'll get up there.
Point of order, no. Are there any other holidays that one might think of where the boardwalk is so substantially busy that it might be detrimental to have people down there? Just want to plant that thought in your head, all right? Okay. Now, on letter H, I ran across a word here, inimical. Please define inimical. Inimical.
Hang on, Google it.
Inimical, it means against, essentially.
Okay. In this day and age, it's customary to use plain English. I like learning new words, but maybe we could say hazardous to the health, safety, and welfare, or detrimental to health and safety, or maybe contrary to, but inimical, I don't think the average person has any clue what inimical is, and if they don't have their phone to Google it, I don't know where that's going to go. So those are things that are not changed. Those are carryovers from the old ordinance. Maybe they're de minimis to change at this point. Maybe you could throw them in with the mix and just change that word at the very least. One last thing, drums. I know at a prior meeting, which I watched on AP-TV, someone brought up the issue of performances that are inherently annoying to some people, such as drumming. I don't mind listening to Inaga de Vita like once, maybe twice, but for three hours straight, if I'm on the beach, which I don't go to, but if I were, I think I would want that person to move within a half hour about 600 feet that way. So maybe certain types of activities are not inimical to the public experience down there, and you might want to exclude them entirely. Drumming is fine, but incessant drumming, just, I hear it on the 400 block of 5th Avenue, and it annoys me to no end when it goes on hour after hour after hour. So I understand the arts, I understand diversity, and, you know, an arts and craft zone and all of this as well, but there's the other side of the coin. People are entitled to the quiet enjoyment of a natural resource, the beachfront at times. So there needs to be some balance, I think. Thank you.
Thank you.
According to Google definition, inimical means tending to obstruct or harm. Synonyms are harmful, injurious, detrimental, damaging, hurtful, destructive. Do you have a guess?
Yes, sir.
Hello, Robert Francis. I had to, I have a lot of comments after that speaker that was in front of me. If you don't like the drumming, sir.
Address the ordinance. You two can take that conversation outside.
Okay.
Address the ordinance, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
And your vote should be directed to the mayor, not to any person in the yard.
Gotcha. Thank you, guys. I think you guys are doing a great job, especially Deputy Mayor Quinn. You have listened to all the performers of what we said, and you took everything that we said into consideration, including with me, including the hours. So I want to thank you guys very much for actually listening. I have no problem with anything in this ordinance whatsoever because you guys have been more than fair, and I want to go on record by saying that you guys have done a great job as far as supporting our street performers, and I want to thank all of you guys. So thank you very much. The 100 feet, if we get moved to S, that's great, you know? It gives everybody a shout like Deputy Quinn, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Quinn was saying. And like I said, I want to thank you guys once again, everybody up there, and especially listening to not shortening the hours, because that was really a hot issue with me, and me and Deputy Mayor Quinn spoke about that intensively, and I want to thank you guys once again.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Just do us a favor, and we appreciate your support. Support us. I'm sure all you street performers are, talk to each other, so get the word out. This is a trial. If it works, it'll happen again next year. If it doesn't work, it's not going to happen again next year. So be our ambassador to the rest of the street performers, and help us make this work.
Sure. And like I said, I'll definitely tell, you know, the people that were not here tonight, the other performers, I will tell them that, and just keep supporting us because, like me, this is how I make my living. I rely on this for the whole entire year, and so, and I appreciate it. Without Asbury, I'd be homeless.
Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you.
And Tony, we should make sure that this ordinance goes to Tony Salerno and then is, I mean, I think it merits a discussion with the special, right?
It'll be addressed tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Hi, Rita Moran, 8th Avenue. As usual, I like to follow the money. Did you increase the price?
I increased the fee, Rita. I increased the fee.
To how much?
It was 20. I increased it to 50.
Still a bargain.
Well, the only, and then my only counter to you, Rita, is that I did research on all towns and what they charge, and I believe 50 was the highest as per Seaside Heights. I mean, don't quote me now, I did this research a month ago, but I went to whatever the highest was.
Okay. They're not as broke as we are, the other towns.
They may not, agreed.
The other thing I wanted to say is, who's going to monitor the 100 feet? You don't even monitor the tables on the boardwalk yet correctly.
I'm not sure that, so, and listen, I'm not going to go too crazy about this. Requesting performers move 100 feet, if they move 97 feet, I don't think that's going to be an issue. If they move 100, you know.
If you want to be technical about it, you can take out your smartphone, plug up Google Earth, you put the ruler on there, you mark your spot, you measure it 100 feet, you move to that spot.
Yeah, if that 100 feet is a big problem, we'll tweak it next year.
We can resolve it.
I think if you just tell them to move a pavilion down, they'll get the gist. I honestly think there's going to be two people all summer asked to move, would be my guess.
I agree. I mean, but, you know, you have all these rules and regulations, and nobody gets the real answers. Tables on the boardwalk, nobody measures them, and everybody's extending their business, and we're not getting the revenue. I mean, it's got to, you know, end. No?
All right.
Yeah.
Any other public comments for ordinance 2015-17?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adopt ordinance 2015-17.
Move it. Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance 2015-19, establishing restricted parking space for use by handicapped persons along Lake Avenue on, in the City of Asbury Park and amending and supplementing Chapter 7-36 entitled Handicap Parking of Chapter 7 Traffic of the Revised General Ordinance of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey. At this time, I'd like to get a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any public comment regarding ordinance 2015-19? Motion to close?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adopt ordinance 2015-19.
Move it.
Second. Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance 2015-20, establishing a 15-minute time limit for single parking space along Somerville Avenue, City of Asbury Park, New Jersey, amending and supplementing revised general ordinances of the City of Asbury Park accordingly. Have a motion to open this ordinance up to the public.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any public comment for ordinance 2015-20? Motion to close public hearing.
Hold on.
Where is it on Somerville?
516.
On Somerville Avenue between Emery and Rand.
516.
516, Somerville.
Southwest corner. So the description here, beginning at a point located 25 feet east of the southeast corner of Somerville Ave. and Emery, extending east on Somerville Ave., measuring 20 feet in length.
What's there?
I think.
A bunch of stores.
Yeah, a couple of businesses. And the problem is, there's no metered parking there.
Yeah.
And there's the school, so the teachers would park there all day. There's no way to control parking there for the businesses. So we're responding to a business, businesses' requests to have a 15-minute parking, which makes sense in that spot because there's no metered parking.
And there's no 15-minute space on that whole block.
So where are the teachers going to park?
Well, we're only taking one space, Rita.
Oh, one?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just one spot.
All right.
Just for those businesses.
Any other public comment?
Motion to close.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adopt ordinance 2015-20. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance 2015-21, ordinance setting salary compensation of employees of the City of Asbury Park or members of the AFSCME Union. Motion to open to public hearing.
Move it.
Second. All in favor? Any public comment regarding ordinance 2015-21? Please state your name.
Yes, Lori Ross, R-O-S-S-S, and Sam, former city employee, 374 Long Branch Avenue is my residential address. With regards to the salary ranges for the folks in this particular union, I don't know if you can ask with regards to, are the ranges based on any qualifying factor of the individuals currently held in those positions, or how are these ranges set? Because quite frankly, just because I'm a former employee with a certain level of qualifications, I will tell you that the salaries seem very, very high. Also, to that point, has there been an analysis on the salary ranges as reflected by the county ranges? Because these are even high for the county and potentially high for the state, meaning that you have folks that are hired regardless of their qualifications. These salary ranges seem quite high. So in adopting this was, again, an analysis done on the ranges. Are they comparable? I mean, because these are, you know. Okay, so for example, well, this is the one I know pretty much. The Director of Community Development Program. The minimum is $28,000, and then the maximum in 2014 is $97,605. 2015 is $99,69. And 2016 is $101,050. And 2017, it is $104,081. And I believe, I could be wrong about this, but I think the governor himself only gets about $165. I could be off, but your ranges are astronomical. So that's the first part of it.
What was the first number you?
Well, listen to this.
No, 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 no.
It's 28,000.
Okay, so they're also very low, and that's what they are, they're a salary range. Depending on your qualifications, you could start someplace between 28 and whatever your number was, 97. Nobody in that position is making $97,000. Nobody in the majority of those positions are making the majority.
But if you have a maximum amount, Mayor?
The maximum.
You can, somebody could slip in and get that, and I do know with regards to that particular position, there is a civil service requirement, because this is a civil service jobs, right? There's a civil service requirement of four years' experience or a college degree, and you have somebody in that position now that's making, I believe, 80-plus without a college degree. And I will tell you that there are people in the private sector, the federal government sector, and the nonprofit sector that would say, hey, this is pay dirt for me. Combined with the fact that you have, I'm sure, a whole lot of residents in the city and in the county and the state, with a state that still has a high unemployment rate that would love the opportunity to apply for these jobs. So there are a couple of questions here. The first question is, number one, your salary ranges, why are they high? Number two, if your city professionals have done an analysis to determine how these job ranges compare to the county and the state, as well as the qualification question that I don't know if I can ask in this public hearing, how does the city determine the salary based on qualifications when according to that particular civil service title, you have to have a college degree or four years' experience, and the person in that position does not have either?
On that, you're straying from the ordinance. The ordinance right now is just setting salaries. It has nothing to do with a specific, specific person, specific job title. It's setting salaries for job titles.
So again, my question is, Mayor Moore, and it's really not you, I guess, possibly, I think it's Mr. Nuccio, has there been, because the council was making decisions based on, I guess, information from the city manager and the professional staff. So again, I say, was there a comparison done? Because there's a lot of folks in this town that are unemployed, there's a lot of folks in this town that certainly have the qualifications, but the reality is, it seems as though they're difficult to get these jobs. So was there an analysis done on these pay ranges?
So let me just try to shed some light on that from my perspective. So if you look, I'm a teacher, and you can have a range of unions, and they have a range of salaries for the same position. So the question is not, when it's in a collective bargaining agreement, the question is not as simple as, here's the analysis, you're high, you're low, because there's a history of negotiation that is built upon, and then you can't just, I mean, it's very uncommon to just scratch a contract and start, I mean, you've got people who are working up steps and have, so it's not as simple as just saying, let's do an analysis, and then we can start from scratch. There's past practice, there are, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, just speaking from my experience as a teacher, there are existing negotiations, prior negotiations and future negotiations that are all taken into account. It's not just the analysis that's determined it.
Well, Councilman Warner, I was a former city employee, I was a member of the particular union in question, and I do understand negotiations, and I understand that in negotiations, if it was a matter of saving a job versus some concessions, and the fact that, I don't speak for the governor for sure, but I will say that there's numerous fights that the governor has, perhaps because you're receiving the transitional aid, God willing, that perhaps what you did yesterday wouldn't be the same thing you did today. If you had some factual information to make, you know, these decisions, or there's some basis in fact that perhaps there would be some consideration on, hey, maybe we want to lower the range, because guess what? The city can't afford it.
The ranges are the ranges, and the percentage increases are well below what the state mandate is, which is no more than 2% a year. There was a five-year contract where the first year was zero, the second year one and a half, third year one and a half, fourth year 2%, fifth year 3%, which is 8% over five years, which is 1.6% if you average it out. So we're well underneath this 2% cap, and most municipalities didn't get 8%. So we, and again, this contract goes back two years, so it's a contract, we inherited, we finished negotiating on it, and I'm going to tell you, since I've been here since 1980 being a former employee, it's the first time ever a council has gotten back more than just pay raises. We increased steps in guides. We took away some benefits, and that's the first time, because in the past, it's always been, be it 1980, '40, you would go a year without a raise, then all of a sudden you were wrapping up the raise, and back in those days, you were getting sixes and sevens. But then everybody would forget about the language. So 1987, you do the same thing, everybody forget about the language. This time, we did not forget about the language, and we did reduce some benefits, which will be a cost savings on all unions. We reduced benefits. And again, all unions got the 8%, except our police got 10% because they gave back more as far as salaries on putting in more steps, or with the police on the grants, and it was a win-win for the city. So the ranges are the ranges, but the increases are 8% over five years, 1.6.
So then can I infer that there was no analysis on how these ranges compared to the county or the state?
I'm not going to say that because the ranges are the ranges, and I'm not going to say that the work and analysis wasn't done.
So we don't know.
A contract ago, because the ranges basically stay the same.
So we don't know. I don't know if I can even ask this, but if you post additional jobs, because I have a lot of folks that come to the center about jobs, I would certainly love to get the job postings, Mr. Nuccio, so that I can disseminate it throughout the town as best I can so that these good jobs with good benefits in good ranges, some of the citizens can avail themselves of a potential prospective job.
That's easy. We'll definitely do that. And whenever we got for any job, we, first we posted in-house, and then it's promotional, which you're aware of. We have to, by the union contracts, promotional first, then we advertise in the papers and everything, and it means we have to reach out to, website communities.
I mean, I can. I mean, I can come every week to that center to see about jobs.
I have no problem with that.
And post them.
I mean, we do list them, they're on the bulletin board, we do put them in the senior center, we put them in the library, but we have no problem, we'll share them with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy Rogers, 92 Monroe. Question to the mayor. Uh, the ranges are the ranges, but I think the people and residents of Asbury should know that, under your discretion, you can hire someone at that range. Am I right?
Correct.
Right now, not under MOU, not under the MOU, which you, which the city is under right now. But outside of that, they can.
Let me just correct you one thing. Mayor and council under a former government, there's no hiring and firing except attorney and city clerk and everything. City manager does hire, call, hire and fire.
Okay, so he can, so he can, so he can hire under that-
Correct.
-under that range.
Correct.
So, right now, I think the people can understand that that range is capable of being accepted.
Yes.
And right now, what they're asking is that, one, that you look at changing those ranges, maybe in a negotiation with the contracts, even on givebacks or anything else. An outrageous range is an outrageous range. And I think $97,000 for a community, uh, block representative is outrageous for such a small town. And it could be utilized better in the community. Am I right?
Yes, but going back through all the years, anybody in that job title, going back to, be it Hazel Samuel's, who was there for so many years, it was the same range, and she never made that type of money. So, you're right. Could a city manager give somebody that type of salary? Then the city manager would have to answer the council, I think the council would bounce the city manager. So, I mean, a range is a range, and should have they maybe been looked at better and maybe modified? I'm not going to disagree with you there, but until somebody starts making that money, like, it's moot to me.
And has the city looked at making sure that most of the jobs being hired under certain ranges are being done by residents of the city first?
We, we-
Making ordinance that hire in the city of Asbury first?
The city has no residency ordinance, which I wish we did. When I worked for the city, there was an ordinance. The past mayor and council did away with the ordinance. That goes back to Jerry's question before, and-
So can we bring it back? Can we get some affirmative that we understand that we may need that to make sure people in this community are getting jobs?
It's something I want to look into, but it goes back to like what Jerry was saying before, like, how can I tell a hotel, "You gotta hire everybody that they have to live in Asbury Park," when the mayor and council don't even do that?
Exactly.
That's something we have to address first.
Exactly.
Okay.
We should point out, though, even though we don't have a residency requirement, uh, under civil service, uh, you're going to find as that preference goes to Asbury Park residents.
Well, yeah, I understand that, but with a, but with, with a residency agreement, you know upfront, so we don't have to fall back on that part. It just makes the council affirm that this is their practice, and that's what they're looking forward to doing.
I just want to say, uh, one thing. People work a lifetime and don't make $90,000. These jobs aren't that hard. They're not hard at all, and half of the people at work here don't even answer the telephone. Call up, you get, every department, you get the machine. So, I mean, there's a lot of things that are wrong with this salary ordinance, I don't think you should pass it tonight. And the other thing is, John, you hold the checkbook. I don't think the city manager does. You're the one that votes on the budget. He doesn't vote on it, so you have a lot to say about this, even though we do have a manager. You could stop this, you could change it, you can do anything you want with it. And I think 8% in five years is a lot of money today. I mean, you're predicting a five-year thing here. It's not even five years, is it?
Yes, it's a five-year contract.
Five-year contract. I mean, it's outrageous. I mean, just take one example. Last year, the girl I was supposed to collect the mercantile licenses didn't do it. She didn't get fired, she's going to get a raise. That's not fair. The taxpayers can't afford this, they really can't. And you keep saying the taxes are going up. I don't know how much more they could go up. Because, you know, we don't have that many benefits coming to the taxpayer in this town. I have potholes in front of my house that are outrageous.
Rita, I don't think anybody would argue with you that we need to do some things better in the city. That's not what we're discussing here. We're simply discussing-
We're discussing money, a lot of money.
Right, but that does not-
Plus 25% benefits that they get. They better start paying like 35% for health care. And I didn't even talk about the bill resolution with $22,000 going out to employees for their health care besides what's in the budget. It's not fair. It really isn't. Something's got to be done about it. It's not fair.
Mary Velino Webb Street. I'm an HR professional for about 25 years, and as I sit here and listen to minimum and maximum, there's a component missing, which is the midpoint. And there are a number of organizations out there, like Mercer, that will do a salary study. It's relatively inexpensive to do, and it will hold true to similar-sized municipalities. So, maybe next go-around, we might want to think about that. And then in conjunction, organizations typically hire below the minimum in the midpoint range, and then there are steps similar to Joe, which you speak about in Respect, as you better yourself and you enhance your skills. So, maybe the council just takes that into consideration for the next go-around, to do an analysis, and then you'll have a pretty good cure about your midpoints and things like that. That maybe would be helpful in quell a little bit of the angst amongst the community. And thank you all for what you do. I want to just add, and I didn't get up earlier, it is very nice to see you all at our community services, such as the Memorial Day on the avenue this past week, and it's, uh, really cool to be part of Asbury. Thanks.
Thank you. Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor? Motion to adopt ordinance 2015-21.
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or discussion? Councilmember Clinton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Standing.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance 2015-22, an ordinance setting the salary and compensation of employees of the City of Asbury Park who are members of the IFPTE union Local 196. Have a motion to open the ordinance to the public.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any public comment on ordinance 2015-22? Motion to close public-
We should have done this one first, because there's no ranges, it's steps. Okay? Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor? Motion to adopt ordinance 2015-22.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Clinton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance 2015-23, an ordinance setting the salary and compensation non-union employees of the City of Asbury Park. Motion to open the ordinance to the public.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any public comments on ordinance 2015-23?
Motion to close.
Move to close. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adopt ordinance 2015-23.
Move it. Second.
I just have a comment. So, just on all of this, I think the idea of putting the bullseye on the back of a public worker in whatever sector, whatever sector, is a bit misguided. So if we just look at, and I was going to talk about this when we did transition aid, if you look at our, the reason that we were, our Moody's bumped us, and it was related to the state's inability to pay the pension system, right? So, I'll give Christie credit in that he was the first to put, or, since the last four, four predecessors, he put more money into the system. But at the same time, there's money that, through his diversification of the assets, we have, you know, reports of upwards of close to half a million, half a billion dollars, like, $400 million that was spent towards management fees, spent towards, um, just a variety of things associated with the management. So, when we're, when we're looking at where some of our money is going, I think it's important to look at that level, and the public worker has been made in the press and the bully pulpit, the target. It's not the public worker, it's some of the pieces that have been moved around up at the top levels of our government that have put us in this situation. So, I just, I just wanted to make that, make that point, because I think it's lost at times.
Any further comments? Councilmember Clinton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance 2015-24, an ordinance authorizing the City of Asbury Park to convey temporary easement of a property located at Block 3702, Lot 1, to the State and New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, and to execute necessary documents in connection therewith in order to facilitate the proposed deal-like dredging project. Motion to open the ordinance to the public.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any public comment regarding ordinance 2015-24? Motion to close?
Move it.
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye. Next.
Motion to adopt ordinance 2015-24.
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
I wanted one thing to say. I thought-
I think you want-
Go ahead, Chair.
Okay, I thought all new licenses that pertain to lot and block were going to have now addresses on them.
This isn't, Jimmy.
There really is no addresses. It's a piece of land right next to the flume, the, where the flume is. It's a grass strip right there, there is no address.
Okay, that's all right.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Clinton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance 2015-25, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7 traffic of the revised general ordinance of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Motion to open the ordinance to the public.
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any public comment regarding ordinance 2015-25?
Fred, do you want to do a little?
This, uh, ordinance was addressed by Councilman Warner at our last work session two weeks ago, and it's basically an interim measure for the city to amend some of the parking regulations while we undertake the review of the Desmond Report and consider more comprehensive parking, uh, regulation. Which, um, there's a number of items that are in this ordinance that were previously addressed during prior work session two weeks ago. I don't know if you want to go through each one individually, and they already have been part of work session discussions, and were recommendations made by the Parking Advisory Committee.
Go.
State your name, please, for the record.
Okay, Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue. Uh, I'm just curious, how many spaces did we end up with in the municipal lot here, right next to us?
Two. I want to say, the same as before, what that was, I said.
No, we had more.
God, we added-
We had sixteen.
A couple, not a lot, but fifteen.
No, I thought it was between eight and sixteen.
Sixteen, okay.
I'm hearing a lot. Okay, we got a lot of spaces.
Approximately sixteen were-
Were added, additionally to what we had.
More were added.
Okay, you don't have a total of them.
A little over, huh?
Okay. Um, the designated spaces for council, manager, et cetera, are they going to be included-
Yes.
-in the paid parking?
Yes.
Off-hours? Great. Um, there were some spaces I know that are used by the police department. I assume those are going to be reserved for the police department only?
Well, they'll be numbered, but the police will have an ID on the sticker from finance on the back of the car, so a cop doesn't give another cop the ticket. But if they don't have a, because it's registered right now as permit parking, so every city employee is supposed to have a permit.
I think he's talking about-
Oh, 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 behind the headquarters?
Yeah.
That's still police, that's still police.
The extreme south end is still reserved for police business only?
And the fence is going to go up around it.
Okay, alright. And then about the, the transportation center, is that being restripped and changed as far as the parking configuration also?
Down the road.
That will be.
Okay, down the road.
So, it's in the ordinance. And it says a question, do we do it this year or six months from now? We ordered one machine for City Hall parking lot. I believe we ordered a machine for that, right?
Oh, we didn't.
Well-
Ordered one machine.
Ordered one machine, and we're looking into, should that be, it's still going back to the Parking Committee, which I think is being perfect. Should that be like Matteawan, Little Silver, should that be like train commuter first, and permit, and then paid parking, so that still works?
Okay, needs to be fine-tuned.
Correct.
Okay, and then the third thing, which is not mentioned at all, is the, the west side lot here, next to the tracks. Is that in the queue, in the process?
That's in the future.
Yeah, so what we tried to do is pick the low-hanging fruit for this.
Right, sure.
We wanted to get it done before the summer season hits. Pick the things that seem to be kind of no-brainers. Let's, I'm not saying they are no-brainers. We'll see how it goes. But the low-hanging fruit, and then all those things are on the discussion for the change that will come into effect-
So there's a sequence of events here. Municipal lot, transportation lot, the, the west of the tracks lot, and we're moving in the direction of having managed parking for all the municipal spaces.
And a new residential permitting process.
Right.
The whole thing, a whole overall, we just can't do it all at once.
Okay, great. Now, one thing I see omitted that hasn't been discussed much is resident parking-only areas. There are several areas where people just don't have off-street parking, because their property doesn't accommodate it. And typically, in other areas, other municipalities, there are spaces set aside for residents only with a permit. Is that on the agenda for the future also?
It is, right? So there's been some just very preliminary discussions, like if you move one block out of the meter parking in the water truck, everybody parks there in the summer, because the beach is crowded, and it's almost impossible to find a spot there. So, I think Joe had raised in Hoboken, lots of places like that have, half of the street is resident-only, the other half is open for public parking. So, that's, we haven't, the Parking Committee has barely even opened that discussion, but it is on our radar, and it's something that we'll be dealing with for the-
Okay, great, because that kind of ties in with the reconstruction of Berg that we discussed earlier. If Berg continue, if the infrastructure projects continue, and Berg is reconfigured going south from Fifth, it will be, in fact, wider than it is now, curb-to-curb. And there's an opportunity to accommodate those residents there that have no off-street parking at all. So, I'm glad that people are thinking about these things. Thank you.
Well, you know what? It's all right, forget it. Forget it, forget it. I was going to bring up the XAV and what we have there, but forget it. I'm good.
Any other public comment regarding ordinance 2015-25? Motion to close?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor? Motion to adopt ordinance 2015-25.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Clinton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Move it. Move it.
Second.
All in favor? Alright, we're adjourned.